It's 5:59, Alderman, we got one minute.
If we could get all of the Aldermen, we're about to start Committee of the Whole.
I'd like to call the July 15, 2024 Committee of the Whole meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Alderman Turner. I just saw him. Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Guzman. Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
You have a quorum. Now, I need a motion and recommendation to seat a Chair Presiding Officer for the July 15, 2024 Committee of the Whole meeting. Do I have a first and a second?
So moved. Second.
Was that Alderman Newsom Flor-
Was Alderman Florian and then myself.
The motion should specify who the Presiding Officer will be.
Alderman Hayes.
Alderman Bolton, do you agree with that second?
I second. Yes.
This is a voice vote?
Yes ma'am.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to Agenda Item C, I believe. Alright, can we get a motion to seat Alderman Guzman first?
I so move.
Second.
First by Alderwoman Bolton, second by Alderman Donaworth. All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, can we do a motion to seat Alderman Turner, please?
So moved.
First by Alderwoman Newsom, second by Alderman Donaworth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I think we have everybody. Agenda Item C is a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes from Monday, May 6, 2024. Can I have a first and a second, please?
So moved.
I second.
Alright, first by Alderman Martinez, second by Alderwoman Florian. Oh, Bolton, excuse me. Opposite end. Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Agenda Item 1C passes. Next up is Agenda Item 2, Audience Time. Are there any members of the audience that wish to address the committee about any of the items on tonight's agenda? Okay?
We do have a sign up, we're gonna go get it.
Oh, alright.
We have three people, you'll have three minutes each. The first one will be Mr. Rayon Edwards, second Chekrestalis, and the third Paul Sweet. Mr. Rayon, go ahead.
Good evening again, Mr. Rayon Edwards. I want to talk about A, C, and D. A, I do understand the logic behind this, but when we're talking about the air pollution and things of that nature, we're talking about plastic bags, balloons, and styrofoam cups. And we're putting a lot of emphasis on that. But we got businesses that come up in here and do all type of things that's polluting the air. And nobody talks about that, ever. I mean, I'm trying to understand, I guess this doesn't bring the city enough money, which is why we're quick to restrict it. But businesses get to come up in here and pollute this air all the time. It just don't make no sense, so I really hope we think about that. I'm glad to see we're talking about the honorary streets. I mean, in a minute, everybody have a street named after them. Literally. Every week, that's what we're doing. And then I want to talk about D. And I'm glad we're talking about terms. But I see members of board and commissions. And so before we pass something like this, Alderman Guzman, I hope we can put in terms for you Aldermen's. If we're talking about terms, let's start there. We're quick to put them on these boards, let's make sure we do it with the Aldermen's and every other elected official. Because, again, the President of the United States of America only gets two terms. So I'm not understanding why anybody should get more than that. Now, I'm willing to compromise and give you an extra one, but outside of that, it's just ridiculous. And if, in case you guys don't know, that's how the corruption starts. When somebody can sit in a seat for eight years, they get to meeting somebody and become friends with them, and then you got all of these personal favors going on. It's been going on in this community all my life. Y'all should be sick of it, because we sick of it. That's how family members get jobs in these cities, they get their family members hired. It's disgusting, and y'all think we don't see that or we don't know that, we do. But when you guys are running for an elected position, you make all of these promises about not supporting these type of things, and then you get up on this board and it's just like you forgot what you told us. We haven't forgotten. So again, when we're talking about term limits, before y'all pass this, let's talk about first putting in term limits as Aldermen's, and then let's talk about them three minutes. Because this is the public's meeting. You guys have access that we don't. So if all we get is three minutes, I don't think y'all should get more than that. That's being fair. You guys have all the time in the world to put together a town hall, to talk to your residents about anything that you want to. But doing it at the city council meeting, keeping us here for hours, is grandstanding. And it's disgusting. Do that on your own time, and respect our time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rayon. Mr. Rex Stalas.
Well, I wasn't going to speak, but I guess I've got a couple of old business items here that would be in support of Alderman Florian's probation of plastic bags. Once again, I think he mentioned something about going further, the air quality issue. I'm going to speak to on the, in the normal audience time. Certainly supporting, if this C is Alderman Tempest, is that what the street sign is, Alderman Turner? No, it's something else, okay. I would certainly be in support of that. And then Alderman Guzman's term limits, yeah, they should apply to all elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweet.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the committee. I was actually asked to come up and speak, we have a rather unique perspective, I think, on specifically on the Mylar balloon issue here. I and a number of friends, including my mother here, actually, we run a Hawk Watch at Illinois Beach State Park every year, every fall. And we, in addition to recording Hawks, we record the balloons we see. Which sounds, started out as a lark, but it now gives us a nice data set. We've recorded 1,281 balloons over 22 years. 1,281. Just in our vision, approximately, I think, three quarters of, no, it's about 1.7 square miles effectively that we're surveying, by my best estimate. 22 years. Yes. Of those, 83 were recorded as Mylar. I should make the point, this is a minimum. Because we, some of them don't get recorded as Mylar, some of them we can't determine because they're simply too far away. If you work out a quick and dirty analysis, assuming population density, assuming the area that we're surveying, this analysis actually runs, includes areas from Kenosha through to Waukegan, to account for the different winds, et cetera. My estimate for that whole area then comes out to approximately 440 per year, Mylar balloons, loose in the air. These are purely helium ones that have been released. So again, minimum. For the US as a whole, that number would come out to 56,000 by my admittedly quick and dirty analysis. If you assume one square foot per balloon, when they reach the ground, then we are actually talking about, within this area, somewhere around three acres, one to three acres of coverage, depending on some questions in the analysis and my assumptions, 28 acres of coverage over the 22 years for the US as a whole. And again, that's just Mylar balloon, balloons that escaped captivity, ended up in the air above us. Because everything that goes up, sooner or later, it'll pop where the helium will run out and it falls. So, just like I said, a slight perspective and some actual data. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Chair Alderman Hayes, that concludes the audience portion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Wait.
Yes?
Yes.
Come on up, just state your name for the record.
Larissa Garland. I am also a resident and I am an employee for the City of Waukegan, and I just wanted to talk about item D. In my opposition to it, and the reason why I oppose it is because in working with the community and trying to get qualified people on these boards, it's difficult to get people on here. It's free, we're not paying people, they're volunteering their time, and when you get somebody who's really passionate and committed to being able to do this, it's important. Another thing too is, it's about compliance, like for example with CDBG. You need to have programs, like the, we need to have board member for the SPP, for example. If we don't have members, then we won't be able to get funding, because they are the deciders of that funding. So it takes us, we will be out of compliance if we don't have members. So if you have people who are dedicated, they're doing what they're supposed to do, they're showing up, and they want to do it again, why wouldn't we give them the opportunity? It's not stopping you from getting other people, that's not what we're saying. We can still always open it up for other people to have opportunity to be on a board, but when we don't have people, then what do you do? We need the monies, we need these boards in place to be able to be in compliance, like for example for my board. Right now, we need nine people. We only have eight. We put it out there, we're advertising, we're asking people, but we're still not getting them. So you try to limit it and stop people from being able to be on it, just because? Why? I mean, I mean, if there's a reason for it, I do understand people being on boards forever and not getting off. Compassionate, they're doing what they're supposed to do, why not let them be a part of it? And then if you're going to change it, then I agree with the public, then change your terms as well. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? I have another gentleman, come on up. Chief Paser, go right ahead.
My name is Greg Paser, I am the Fire Chief, I'm also a resident of the City of Waukegan. I'm also going to jump on board with what Director Garland said. We have two members appointed to our Fire Pension Board for the City of Waukegan, and I don't believe there should be term limits for them. It is very difficult to get members who actually want to be on this board. The two members that we currently have on the board have over 60 years worth of financial background, between the two of them. Both work for big companies, both have been in the financial industry for a long time. The Waukegan Firefighter Pension Fund is over $100 million right now, and I don't think we should just take anybody off the street to be in charge of our pension fund. They have to go through continuing education training every year. I can't remember the exact amount of hours, but it is significant. So it is, they don't get paid to do it, and we, as a city, including Director of Finance, including all the firefighters, and all the council members, rely on these people to make good judgments when it comes to our investments for all of these funds. So I'm asking you to please reconsider when it comes to term limits in speaking with the Fire Department Pension Fund. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think that's one more. Ms. Noel Kishir Lepper. Your mic is off.
Is that better? Sorry. Planning and Zoning Commission is a state mandated commission, they're obligated to have the public hearings for items that later appear before the city council. They spend hours as volunteers, reading stacks of documents, our monthly packet on paper is usually roughly two inches thick. They read through all those materials, they study our ordinance to make sure they're applying it appropriately. They ask questions, hold public hearings, which often are about an hour meetings, but they've gone as long as five or six hours on a Thursday evening. These people are committing a great deal of time and learning the codes and understanding the community. They go out on the weekends before the Planning and Zoning Commission and look at the sites and understand what's happening on the ground on those locations. And we've had a vacancy for a long time. You know, we're looking for people with architectural expertise, legal expertise, kinds of things that apply specifically to the types of projects that they're reviewing. And, you know, if we had a bench full of people for all of these boards and commissions, then I can see limiting terms because there would be so much demand to serve on those. But we haven't had that in all the years up been here. There aren't people clamoring for these volunteer positions. So, please encourage your constituents to submit resumes for all of the boards and commissions that exist in the city. We have a summary on the website of each of them, and there doesn't have to be a vacancy at any point in time to apply for those. They can, you know, we can start developing a file, and that would be a fantastic problem to have, that we had too many applicants, and we had to limit terms. But until that happens, please don't limit the terms, we need the expertise from the people who are volunteering and committing their time as residents of Waukegan for the betterment of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lepper. Final call, anyone else like to make a comment? Final call. Chair Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you to all those members of the audience that spoke. We're moving on to Agenda Item 3.
Before we move forward, I'd like to put a motion to move up from new business, an ordinance amending section 2130 of the Waukegan City of Ordnance to revise hours of alternative night parking restrictions up to the front.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Guzman, a second by Alderman Felix, to move Agenda Item 4B to the top of Old Business. Is that my understanding?
That is correct, Charlie.
Alright. Are there any questions to the motion?
I would like to say I'm opposed to this, I've been waiting since February to have this plastic bag ban discussed, it's now July, so it's a little annoying to me that this is going to be pushed aside again.
Could I recommend potential a compromise? If it was moved up, could we move it up after Agenda Item 3A, so we can hear this Alderwoman Florian's?
Why do we need to move it up at all? What's the rationale, why is he asking for that?
That's fine, we can continue down that line. Alderman Turner, do you want to make additional comments?
Alright, it's just, he didn't state why he wants to move it up, so maybe if there's some rationale for it.
Because I have residents waiting for this, this is, this is ongoing citations, I'm not worried about the overnight parking, I'm worried about from this 6:30 to noon parking. That is the most important, because you could be an early riser, you could go to breakfast and park in your driveway all night long, and then say, hey, you know what?
I get it, I understand, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if people's breakfast habits are an emergency, but is there anyone else that would like to comment, or we can just take a vote? Yeah, a vote to whether we move it up?
So, it's a procedural motion to amend the agenda to move item 4A ahead of Old Business, and would be considered next. I don't know-
And that's 4B.
Sorry, 4B, not 4A. Yeah, 4B. I don't know if there's consensus on this, so I would probably, in this case, recommend a roll call vote.
Roll call, Madam Clerk. Please.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Donaworth.
No.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
My question is, does that negate anything else?
It doesn't negate anything else, it just changes the order, it pushes this ahead of the other, the other items that are on the agenda. Yeah, it's, it's still on the agenda.
Okay. No, longest, I guess his item is, is addressed, yes.
That was a no, ma'am?
Yes.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
No.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
The nays have it.
Okay, back to, thank you, Madam Clerk. Back to Agenda Item 3A. 3A, under Old Business is the discussion of prohibition of plastic bags, styrofoam takeout containers, and Mylar balloon sales. The sponsor is Alderwoman Florian, and it's a continued discussion from February 5, 2024, Committee of the Whole meeting. Alderman Florian, I'll kick it over to you, if you'd like to comment on this.
The only comment I have, we've talked about this a lot, it's not really Mylar balloon sales, it's helium in Mylar balloons, because that's what causes them to float up and cause problems. You can still sell them, Jewel Osko, as a matter of fact, sells them, but they don't put helium in them, they're, they don't float, so you can have a display of them. As a matter of fact, I've passed the new oil change place, and they actually have some plastic-looking balloons out front that are, are not filled with anything, but they look like they're, that's what I'm talking about. I just don't want the Mylar balloons floating in the sky. So it's not prohibiting the sale of them, you just can't put helium in them. Helium is a finite resource, and it's needed in the medical community. And so, by banning helium in the balloons, I think we're, we're doing a lot of good, we're saving the environment and helping the healthcare industry, so.
Thank you, Alderwoman Florian. Are there any other comments, Alderman Felix?
So, I hear that there's a concern of them going up in the air, but we did pass a ordinance to not release the balloons anymore. So I think that would take care of that, that issue. Because a lot of people do use, even just to have it in their party, to have some helium in it, I mean, people use it all, everywhere, any religion, any, any family, they do it all the time, so I don't think there's, there's a, it doesn't make sense for me to, to do this. I understand there's a need for it in terms of the medical community, but I don't, I haven't heard that there's a shortage or anything like that.
There is a shortage.
Of helium?
Any other comments?
Yes.
Alderman Donaworth?
Also included in here, other than the balloons, okay, is the plastic bags, styrofoam takeout containers, and things like that. Let people recycle their own stuff, we don't need this, let people do their own stuff, we don't need to outlaw plastic bags, styrofoam takeout containers, and Mylar balloons. People can recycle their own stuff, because bags and styrofoam containers, there's just added to the balloons, and there's no air added to styrofoam containers or plastic bags, and all you are is hurting people, because now somebody's going to go in to get something at the dollar store, and they're going to say you can't have a plastic bag, this is ridiculous, I said no.
So, can I, can I address that, or do you want?
Please.
You want to go first, Alderman Turner?
Yeah, if you don't mind. So, totally agree with Alderman Florian regards to helium balloons, it's not a necessity that you have a balloon that floats and flies away. Gentleman came and talked about his experience and observations when it's Hawk White, so I'm absolutely in favor of your ban on helium balloons. I'm sorry, I'm absolutely in favor of the ban on helium balloons. However, I have to agree with Alderman Donaworth, I don't think that a ban on plastic bags is going to do anything, every, every, not every, but most, or many of our products that we purchase regardless come in plastic containers, so I don't see the purpose in, in the plastic bags. Ma'am, I will support you on the balloons, as I stated, but not on the bags or styrofoam containers.
I have-
Alderwoman Newsom?
I have a concern as well regarding the takeout containers, and the restaurants that use these, takeout containers, what is it going to do to their business where they can't use styrofoam for takeout? What is it going to do for the businesses? Will they have to resort to a different type of container that is going to cost much more in takeout, or what?
There are lots of options, some of them are much more expensive, but some are not. And many companies already use them because they understand how dangerous styrofoam is for the environment. So there are options, and this is something, I don't know, I didn't read through this this morning, but it's not something that would take effect immediately, it would be like in the next year. So people would have time to get alternatives, and as far as the plastic bags go, some places like Aldi, I don't know if you shop there, it's one of my husband's favorite places, you can't get a plastic bag at Aldi. We went to Old Navy recently, you can't get a plastic bag at, at Old Navy. There's a lot of places that are already not doing plastic bags, and people have to get in the habit of bringing their own bag, or they purchase a bag while they're there. It's something the, the world is getting used to doing, so it's, it's coming, whether, whether, I think by us doing this, we're going to point out to people that we're, we're leading the way. I've gotten so many compliments about our balloon recently banned, wow, Waukegan did that, we're really, people were really impressed that we care enough about the environment to do something like that. So here's the helium information. The global market has experienced several shortages of helium since 2006, and the price of helium has nearly doubled just since 2020. Helium is a critical component in many applications, including scientific research, medical technology, national defense, and space exploration. Shortages can be problematic for hospitals and research groups, and can even lead to a complete breakdown in supply. So I don't think we should be wasting helium in balloons, no matter how great it is to have a helium balloon, when this is the kind of stuff that helium is needed for, and there's a critical shortage of it.
I'm going to just add a quick point, I just looked, Alderman Donaworth, your point was a good one about people being able to recycle their own items. It looks like LRS does not accept styrofoam as a recyclable item. I think it's technically recyclable, but LRS doesn't accept it. So within the city, people are not able to recycle styrofoam, based on my quick look, but, so that's something we might, we might want to consider.
Did you see anything about, or maybe Lynn knows, what, what is the, the impact of styrofoam, what's the effect of it on the environment? How does it harm?
I couldn't speak to that, I'm, I'm sure on some level it's toxic, like a lot of things we put in landfills, but I, I don't know, yeah. In the, in the meantime, Alderman Guzman has a comment.
Okay, the balloons, I, I passed by somewhere, I'm not going to say where, who it was, they had a service outside, and, and they were honoring what had happened at the location, and they must have released like 40 balloons. So it's a religious thing, it's not just something that- Well, it's a Mylar balloon, you're, you're talking about helium, so helium goes up, balloons go, helium goes inside a balloon, and then they tie it up, and it goes up, to release. So we are talking about balloons. Okay, and styrofoam, paper bags and stuff, it's, it's your conscience, you're the one who should be able to recycle, I mean, I mean, it's no longer going to be free to, for your delivery, I mean, it's going to cost you money. Let me see, styrofoam pan costs you maybe a penny or two, paper one costs you maybe 10, 20 cents. We're talking huge percentages for businesses, and they're going to pass it on to the consumer, so the prices will go up.
Alderwoman Florian, I don't know if you want to respond to that.
I, I want to respond to the styrofoam issue. So the EPA has identified styrofoam as the fifth largest creator of waste, fifth, of all the waste created in the country. So it's a huge problem, we have way too much of it. It, it breaks down, creates issues with water and air. Let's see here, of, of 3 million tons, 2.3 million end up in landfill, while the remainder finds its way to water, to the masses of bodies of water. Americans throw away 25 million styrofoam cups a year, which is around 82 cups a person. When left in a landfill, styrofoam takes 500 years to degrade, that's the problem. 500 years.
Alderman Martinez?
This is concerning the bags, I mean, in my, in my ward, we have a lot of senior citizens, even on the way up here, I've seen a couple that were walking with, with paper bags. In my ward, they don't have the, a lot of them just don't have vehicle, they don't have that, that, the privilege or whatever, or the, the amenities to go, go here, drive here and there, and I'm kind of concerned, and I'm trying to get a visual picture, when you say, let's go ahead and do it with plastic- you say, "Let's go ahead and do it with plastic bags," so what happens to that senior citizen who's on a very strict budget, who is dependent on walking from, from, from the Maz and Paws to the Dollar General, to the, to, to the, to the grocery store and back home? How are we gonna accommodate them? And I, I, I think it's, it, it is a, a good idea, but I, I don't think it'll be effective now in my ward, because I'm, I have to look out for those constituents that just don't have the amenities and, you know, can't drive to Walmart or, or whatever, but, uh, right now, I, I, I think it's not a good idea. Like I said, on the way up here, I seen three people walking, two of them were senior citizens, and they had bags. So I like to know, how are we gonna address those? Are we gonna tell the senior citizens, when they make their purchase, that, "Oh, well, you know what, did you bring something to put that food in?" You know, we have to also consider that, we have to consider the, you know, that point of view, and, and be fair amongst everyone.
Anybody else?
I believe one of the things we can do, um, Alderman, is hand out bags that are reusable. The city already has some of those bags, I think you've seen them, they've given them away at certain events, there's some that are kinda woven, and then I think there's some that are a little bigger. I think having the city start getting people thinking along those lines, offering them, like, for instance, when we do our, um, our garbage collection, our clean sweeps, we could maybe hand them out at those events, so people can get them. If you particularly know people in your residence, you know, in your community who may be affected by this, we could make sure they get a couple bags, so. They can only carry so much anyway, when they go to the store, right? So if we were given, if we give them a reusable bag, and then also the stores hand them out often, right? There's, I have, I can't tell you how many I have at home from going to different events, people hand them out because it's something, and then if you go to Aldi, as I suggested earlier, well, you see people, they know, they walk in with their bags, 'cause they know they're not gonna have a, a plastic bag when they get in there. So it's, it's the wave of the future, and people will eventually know, when you go somewhere, you need to bring your bag with you.
Is, is there any way that we can just, uh, enact this in one ward, to see how that goes, how that plays out, and if it plays out, then maybe we'll do it, uh, citywide?
I don't think we're able to enact things on a per ward basis, but it's not a bad suggestion, I don't think we're allowed to do it, though. You know, this does consider it's plastic bags, styrofoam, takeout containers, and Mylar balloon sales. Uh, I don't know if we have a, a consensus on any one of these to move forward with potentially drafting an ordinance, maybe it's on the Mylar balloon, maybe it's all three, maybe it's Mylar balloons, styrofoam, that's pretty compelling, five hundred years to break down in a landfill. But, does anybody have any thoughts on moving forward with an ordinance on all three, or any one of them?
No.
I, I don't think we're all... I think we should call.
Call for a vote?
It seems to me if, um, I'll make one last comment, um, it seems to me if, if we've already, you know, enacted an ordinance about balloon releases, then the Mylar balloon sales, I mean, if you, if you can't fill them with helium, right? That's, that's the idea here, is that you, you can have Mylar balloons, they just can't be filled with helium, that's what the ordinance would look like.
A ban on helium, I think it should be reworded to specifically state ban on helium.
So that might be a way to move this forward, is a ban on helium within Mylar balloon sales, because that would encourage people to release balloons if they had the ability to do so. So if there was no helium in the balloons in the first place, that would just, that would in effect bolster the ordinance that we already have on the books.
Are you, Alderman Turner, willing to share the story you shared on Thursday about the...
Absolutely, absolutely, what a wonderful experience that was. I recently had a friend of mine pass, Mr. Larry McShane, and, uh, I attended his service at the church, and then afterwards, rather than, rather than release balloons, we released butterflies, and there's an organization, you can find it on the internet, and they'll ship you live butterflies in, in, uh, in a paper, and we all stood around, a couple people said a few words, "We rele- release these butterflies into the," and it's just awesome. And that does the exact opposite of pollute the environment, it enhances the environment. So I would encourage, and I think maybe we should adopt a, an initiative, if you will, to encourage people to do something more of that nature.
Uh, one thing I did wanna mention, is that, um, you can find things on, on the internet, I mean, there's an article from New York Times, that the helium shortages seem very unlikely. I think it's almost the same one that you read, but just a little bit lower, so, I mean, there's always articles out there, um, and it says that, you know, they've been easing since the second half of the 2023, so, there's, there's always a research out there, you have to look at everything all around. I, I don't think we have an agreement, I mean, for the most, the, maybe putting these two, all three together is not the best idea. I think the sty- the styrofoam, a lot of businesses use it, a, a lot of small businesses use the, the styrofoam and the bags, and it would, a lot of change, they would, it would have to be done to get rid of the, um, so if you go to Chicago and Walmart, now you have to pay for your bags, you know, like ten cents or more, I don't know how much you had, you know, in Chicago, so, you're putting a cost to the people, 'cause they're not gonna not sell bags, you know, so.
So moving forward, is there, I for one would like to at least see the Mylar balloon sales with helium in there, have an ordinance on that front, and that at least moves part of this forward. It sounds like maybe there's some agreement around that, should we...
Are you amending?
I'm, I'm sorry, the public comment period, uh, already ended, but you're welcome to address this during the public comment, uh, at the general meeting, if you'd like.
So, um, can we, can, I'm sorry, Stu, if I might before he speaks, sir, can we, if Alderman's agreement, can we split that out and, and, and make, like, specific ordinance around the helium for the Mylar balloons, and then take a vote on the other issues as well, so at least we get one of them passed? Can we do that?
Alderman Turner, that's exactly what I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask if you could, if there is consensus on banning the filling of balloons with helium within the city, we can prepare that ordinance? So if you wanna make a motion to direct us to, to Corporation Council to do that, we can do that, and if there is five votes, we can have that put on the next council agenda.
I'll make that motion, just as you stated, so I don't have to restate.
And I'll second it.
First by Alderman Turner, and second by Alderwoman Florian.
And just, just to clarify for the record, this is a motion to direct Corporation Council to prepare an ordinance banning the filling of balloon, balloons commercially with helium within the city of, um, Waukegan, and, um, if we are so directed, we will prepare an ordinance for the next city council agenda.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Hayes?
Aye.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
No.
Alderman Martinez?
Aye.
Alderman Felix?
No.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
I's have it.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Alderwoman Florian, if, doesn't sound like there's consensus on the plastic bags and styrofoam containers?
I'll keep working on that, I'm gonna talk about that five hundred years every chance I get.
Sounds good, I, I, I support you on it. Uh, can, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item B, if that's okay. All right, uh, Agenda Item 3B, under Old Business, is a discussion of code amendment regarding removal of graffiti from private property. It's continued from the February 5th, 2024, Committee of the Whole, and I believe it was Alderman Turner, did you sponsor this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you care to comment on it?
Yeah, I'll just restate it again, you know, for, for ever and ever, it has been an unwritten, uh, policy, that the Public Works Department would remove, uh, graffiti from private property, specifically your garage, so imagine you come home, your garage has graffiti on it, or your, the side of your house, or your business, or whatever, and you, you may not have the wherewithal to remove it or paint over it yourself. Additionally, uh, graffiti is often the work of, uh, gang members, and it's, it's signage and communications within the gang culture, so a gang member puts some graffiti on a wall, another gang member comes and, and cancels it, and so, and it grows. Uh, recently, I was in the fourth ward, went down in a war, in an alley down there, there were three garages that had been graffiti, with gang graffiti, but as I looked down the alley, there were maybe six other fences and garages that had been previously graffitied, and, and Public Works has been out there and put spat, put spat, splashes of paint. So, and when Public Works goes out there, and Chris correct me if I'm wrong, but they only use one of, one of two, one or two colors, either white or brown, and they only cover the graffiti, they're not gonna repaint your fence, they're not gonna repaint your garage, but only the graffiti that they find, is that right?
We use one color, and that one color is, is a white, and it's a primer.
Okay, great, thank you. So, um, I, I would like to make this an official policy. It's like the broken windows so, uh, syndrome, if you leave one, one window broken, others will be broken, and soon you'll have a plethora of broken windows, and the same with graffiti, and it's, uh, it's not good for our community, I think for obvious reasons.
Thank you, Alderman Turner, are there any, uh, Alderwoman Newsom?
Uh, I have no problem with this, um, but I have had residents in the past that have had graffiti put on their garage, and they opt not to have the city put white paint on their garage, they would rather repaint it themselves. So I think if we're gonna pass something like that, it's up to the resident to say that they would want, um, the garage, and they're just gonna cover the graffiti, not, they're not gonna paint the whole garage to your standards, they're just gonna get rid of the graffiti.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, now if you had neighbors, uh, state the same, so I think maybe, um, so if a neighbor, uh, requests, obviously, but sometimes, I know, I've, I've just seen it and called it in myself, as I did the other day, right? So maybe the policies should be, if, let's say, one of us calls in graffiti on someone's home or garage, and then the Public Works would contact, and if we don't, and ask them, "Hey, you know, we got a call from the Alderman, is it okay if we put paint over this, this graffiti?"
And the process with that, and we started it with, uh, Commissioner George Sallis, when he was here, is the Building Department would contact the homeowners, and ask them, "Hey, in our ordinance, we have this where, I don't have it with me, forgive me, but it's in the ordinance that they have to maintain their property, so on and so forth, but however, you got this amount of time to get this graffiti off, would you like Public Works to come and get it off?" Some opt not to do it, they'll do it themselves.
Right, the problem was, in, in that, uh, Chris, was that they would go out and tell somebody, they give them a notice of violation, and they give them seven days or something to get it off, and if they couldn't, then they would get a citation, and then that led, led into a fine, and additionally, uh, if they said, "Yeah, you can go ahead and do it," you would still charge them a fee to do it. So what I'm suggesting is to be expeditious, and courteous, and, uh, serving the citizens and, and the residents of, of Waukegan, is just get it done. We've always gotten it done before, in the past, and, and I know one, for a while, it was several years ago, you know, I, I was going around, and I had blue paint, and I was, you know, covering over graffiti in the sixth ward, I mean, this was many years, this was long before I became the Alderman, because it was, the guy, there was a guy doing, I call it the graffiti wars, he did like forty-seven hits of graffiti, and I was right behind him, cleaning it up and painting it over, so I think we need to be expeditious in getting this stuff resolved.
Alderman Turner? Can I? Alderman Felix?
So it, it says it on there, I mean, I think this is pretty simple, at the, so the, if the, the, the material on the, uh, ordinance that we're voting on, it says it on there, public, uh, so it says that, "At the request of a private property owner," so, I mean, it's at the request, so I, I don't think there should be an issue where we're just gonna go out there and start painting people's houses. So, I mean, I think it's a pretty simple ordinance, if you go through the alley, I mean, there's graffiti all over the place, so if, if the homeowner requests for it to be painted at simple white, I mean, I don't think that's a, should be a big issue, I don't think. But again, at the request, so no one's being forced to do anything here.
Alderwoman Bolton?
I'm sorry, Alderman Florian had her hands up before my...
Oh, thank you, um, I just have two questions, so if they come out and they paint it white, let's say my garage, for instance, is gray, so now I'm gonna have a white spot on my, on my garage, is that a code violation? Will I still get cited, because now my garage just looks weird, because I have a white spot on my garage?
Now, from my understanding, no, you want, you won't, from my understanding, because you got rid of the graffiti.
Well, yeah, I have an inch away, but...
Yeah.
Um, and then what about, like, the, the issue of at their request, I'm, I'm concerned about, like, you saying you've done it yourself, could someone get you for trespassing, if you, like, come on their property and do something that they didn't ask you to do?
Give them that citation that you're looking for.
Perhaps Corporation Council can speak to it.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, there's a few things that we can do to address this. If the will of the council is that you want to have this codified, um, we would make sure that there was a, a, a very simple release, I'm talking like half-page, not something that, you know, that you would require an attorney, but basically saying, "I understand that I'm allowing the city to enter upon my property to apply one, uh, one coat of paint, um, of the shade of basically what the city has on hand, we will not be," and to spot cover, not to fully cover. And the one thing that I would suggest is that we could put in, um, a provision that said, "Any citations for removal of graffiti shall be told or abated," basically, you will not be, you will not be cited if you put in a request. My only concern is that, you know, if Public Works can't get to this for a week, that we're put, we're, we're putting the squeeze on them, when they may have flooding, they may have other things to do. So if you make the request for them to come out, and even if they can't come out the next day, there will be no citation. And that would be kind of a way to balance resources versus the, the neighborhood service.
One other question, oh, Alderman, actually Alderwoman Bolton, I think, was up.
Yeah, I appreciate how Alderman, uh, Turner articulated the dynamics of gang activity, 'cause I know it's when I, you do remove those gang signs, that's their way of communicating, and they get really confused, they're like, "No, you're not marking this area for gang activity," so I really validate the fact of removing those gang symbols and signs, so I just wanted to validate that.
Thank you, Alderwoman Bolton, uh, Alderman Martinez?
Yeah, my question is the fact that, um, so is there a time, is there a limit to how many times we can go back, or is this ever, if they, if they tag it, and then we gotta go back again, we go back next week and next week, at what point do we say enough's enough, and maybe at that point, the, uh, uh, the homeowner should take responsibility, but, I mean, are we gonna give it a, 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 a limit as how many times we can go out there? Or is it just keep going out there, keep going out there, keep going out there?
I should, I don't think there should be a limit.
Alderman, Alderman Turner, we did speak on this, you and I, and we gave it three strikes, and after the fourth time...
I, I remember that discussion, Chris, but in, in further thought, I, I don't, I don't think we should limit that, I don't, uh, particularly, many, many of our homeowners, um, may not have the wherewithal to do it, and, because I keep going back to an elderly woman I saw with a cup of, a cup of paint up on a ladder, trying to paint her garage because code had given her a notice, and then they came back and given it, gave her another one about peeling paint on the front of her house, around the windows, and the woman was, was panicked that they, the city was gonna take her house. And that elderly woman up on that lot, up, up on that garage really sticks with me, so, and I, 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 yeah, you and I had that, that, but I, no, I think we should, there should be no limit, just get it done, we have the resources, taxpayers pay taxes for a reason, let's get it done.
Um, I have a comment, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, one of my concerns is the resources on Public Works, if someone has to apply, if there's a citation that has to be issued, then there's an application that has to be tendered, and then they have to follow up with the homeowner to make sure that the homeowner has noticed that we're gonna enter upon the, the premises, it seems like there's a lot of backend potential paperwork or following up or communication, which inevitably, we talk about this a lot, it costs time, it costs money, it takes away from the resources that Public Works has. So, Director Garland, maybe I'm off base here, but may, can you speak a little bit to what that looks like from a management perspective?
Far as the time goes, if the department that's doing this, 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 uh, process, if we have them in another job, doing another emergency job or something, that's gonna prolong the process of whatever paperwork that you're bringing forth, that we need, that they need to, uh, bring forth, and sign and say it has to be done by this time, or so on and so forth, so, I don't think we should go that route, I mean, because they're gonna be calling you guys, saying, "Hey, I filled out the paperwork, they still not here." So, not knowing that we had an emergency that we had to do, so we weren't able to get there as soon as they want us to be there.
Alderman, uh, Alderwoman Florian, go ahead.
Um, Director Garland, how, you've been with Public Works a long time, how often does it happen where... How often does it happen where it's more than three times on the same property?
We have that written down as well. We documented some of that.
Just a rough estimate. Like, does it happen 10% of the time, or 90% of the time? I mean, is it...
It happens like 10 to 15% of the time.
Okay, so it's not real often?
It's not real often, correct.
Alderman Guzman?
I agree with Alderman Turner. I don't think it should be a limit to it. I mean, they, I mean, the property owner has no effect to it. And if Public Works receives it today, I mean, whenever they get to it, that's when they get to it. I mean, there should not be put a limit to Public Works when they could get to it. As long as it's on the list, they don't get cited, period. And that's it. And then when Director Garland, his people have time to it, to do it, obviously, there's gonna be priorities, there's gonna be emergencies, there's gonna be all kinds of stuff that pops up, but they'll get to it. Just like when you put a request in to fill a pothole. Obviously, they're not gonna do it five minutes later. They're gonna get to it. When there's a branch out there, they're going to get to it.
Can you call for the vote, sir?
It's the same thing. So I call for a vote.
Thank you, Alderman Guzman. I'm gonna make one more comment, then we'll call for a vote. One of my biggest concerns when I read this is just having the city perform tasks on private property. And my concern isn't necessarily the trespass component, it's where does that stop? I mean, maybe it's an elderly person that has a dead tree, and we have a dead tree ordinance. Is the city responsible for going out and cutting down trees? No, but that's similar to this. The homeowner can't control if the tree dies or not, in many instances. So what I don't want to see is the city go down a path where we are starting to remediate issues on private property using city resources. And it's just, I could see that being a concern down the road, and I just wanna voice that generally. You see a house that's a dangerous hazard? Is the city responsible to go in and board it up? Not necessarily. Or a pool that doesn't have a fence around it? Is the city responsible to then go in and remove, or to put in the pool? Or, excuse me, the fence? So that's, it concerns me that we're now gonna start allocating city resources to remediating issues on private property. And I just wanna put that out there. Other than that, we can call for a vote. At this point, maybe we should remed, or not remediate, remind everybody exactly what it is we're voting on.
Yeah, well, yeah, right now, this was only a discussion. So similar to the last item, if someone would like to make a motion to direct Corporation Council and kind of sum up where you think your consensus is, I'll take note of that, and we can prepare.
Do we have a first and a second?
Don't move.
I second.
First from Alderman Martinez, and second from Alderwoman Bolton. Vote, please. And we'll move it.
Just, yeah, I still need to know what you're, I mean, I have a sense, but Alderman Turner, since this was your discussion item, if you could just give me the bullet points of what you're, what you guys are directing, and we can prepare the ordinance.
So we're directing that the Public Works Department will come and paint, wait a minute, because we used to make an attempt to remove it too, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you either make an attempt to remove it[1671.48]